All right, we're gonna call to order our quarterly library board meeting. Roll call please.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
All right, I declare a quorum. And today, doing our opening prayer is the new student minister of the Assembly God Church, Jeff Dibble. So I'll get you up to the platform there.
Father God, first of all, I just want to thank you for this just glorious, beautiful weather of a day out here in Perry, Oklahoma. God, I just thank you for that so much, God. And I thank you for just being a little part of the process of this city, God. I'm new here, and I'm just glad to be a little bit of part of it, God. And I just want to thank you for all the men and women in this room, God, who take part of the great American democratic process, God. And I pray most of all, Father, that they don't just lean on human wisdom, God, but the wisdom of your Spirit, the wisdom of your Word, God. I just pray that you'll flow in this room, God, you'll affect decisions, God, because we all want one thing here, God, the betterment of Perry. So, in the name of Jesus, I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Item number one is our consent agenda. Do you think you'd like to pull out of that, or do we?
Motion approved.
One second.
I hear a motion, a second. Vote, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
All right, moves on to item number four. Any comments from those assembled in regards to the Perry County Library? See none? We move on to item number five, and this is our orderly, or oral quarterly report from librarian, Ms. Stan.
Hello, very happy to be here tonight. The library added 960 items to the collection between July and September. I just want you to know that they're coming in. And we had a very successful summer reading program. One of our strategies was trying to be very inclusive with the children's programming, them having hands-on activities or magic shows, and it was a tremendous success thanks to Lynn Branson. I worked with Free to Grads and at the Cherokee Strip Celebration for my first sale, and we had all of Friends of the Library book sale and a drink sale, and I had a great time. I am now a council member for the Oklahoma Literacy Coalition. I attended the conference in September. I will be attending a three-day conference in Norman in November. I'm excited to see what we can do in Perry on this topic with the resources available to us. I will be attending the Public Library Directors Retreat in Miami in October. This is an exciting opportunity to network, get programming ideas, and learn from other librarians. The upcoming Friends of the Library book sale is October 20th to 24th from 9:30 to 5:00. The first day is for members only, but the price for an individual is only $5. We are going to announce plans soon for our Theater Thursday Day at the library. We distributed flyers and allowed the community to vote on three time slots and three activities. The winner is movies. We will be showing popular movies. The attendees will select the movie for the following month. We are working on preparing for new carpet. So, we were given a $3,000 donation on July 17th by the Elizabeth T. Willams Trust. The stipulation for the use of these funds is that the donation be spent with approval of the library board. I will request that the funds be used to pay for a company to move our ranges, and hopefully they will be able to move in fully loaded with books. So that's our plan. There is no guarantee we'll find a company willing to accept this contract, but I'm sure hoping for the best.
May too.
They're out there.
Okay, Tyson, we're up. We have, we are fortunate enough to have the Dr. Martin Garden. I love Dr. Martin. He comes to the library almost every day, and I get the pleasure to talk with him and interact with him. And you all are correct, he is a very respected member of this community. I've talked with Dr. Martin, and I've talked with Brenda, and we think it's time for some updates, some improvements to the Dr. Martin Garden. And all of the improvements that we've talked about this evening, I have discussed with Dr. Martin, and they give me with his approval. We would like to purchase seasonal flowers and plant them in existing pots. Move pots and existing dishes to make a pretty seating area. Create a pathway to the new seating area. Buy another bench with a back for the concrete area. Remove the dying tree. Reduce the size of the mulched area to decrease maintenance hours, lessen the cost of purchasing mulch. Remove soil from around the bed near the front door and put in something to contain the mulch. So when the rain, the mulch just rolls onto the sidewalk. Next slide. So there's some pretty photos. Next slide. And next slide. So that's an example of a bench we could buy. So we just, you know, we talked with Dr. Martin, I talked to Brenda. We wanted to make sure that everything we do is very practical and also very pretty because Dr. Matt Martin, I just think that's the right thing to do. Do you have any questions?
A little clarification for you. Around here, as you're running out, it's Miami.
They all guessed because they thought you were going to Miami, Florida.
I'm from Missouri, and I did well. I went to Open Movie this weekend.
You did great. Got that out.
In your report in our packet, you talked about teaching some bibliographic classes to the elementary. Did you guys get to?
No, that, that would be more towards the high school or junior high. And I made the offer. And we will see if it's accepted.
Okay, so there's no agreement yet?
No. It's the school librarian will talk to the English instructors. That's what I did the last 10 years at the community college, and I had fun doing it. You know that use it or lose it thing? I'd like to use it some. Like to keep my skills and also help the students.
Did you mention something about the carpet? Did I hear that the board needs to? Is that in the agenda or is?
Not tonight.
Okay, that's a further agenda.
I'm just sort of paving the path.
Ah, I got you. Well, I was missing some pages, so I was just making sure that, I didn't know if we could adjourn tonight or not. I was gonna be curious about that, so I'm worried.
You're gonna be here all night.
That's why I sent you that page.
Bill takes over when I need to answer the question. We're good shape, so.
Yeah, I will adjourn.
You will adjourn. All right. Any other questions? Any new business that needs to come before the library board? See none? Take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Vote, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Item one is 9:23 PM. This is a regular.
Time flies, we have to move.
Thank you. 6:23 PM. We are regular meeting of Perry Municipal Authority. It is October 6th, 2014. And I'll follow.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes, I do declare a quorum. Item one of PMA is our consent agenda. Any considerations on that or discussion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Any comments from those assembled regarding the PMA? Any proclamations, commendations, reports, or inquiries about getting embodied? See none for item four, item five? Any new business to be brought to the table? Other than carpet? Take a motion.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
See if I can get the time right this time. It's 6:25 PM, October 6th, 2014. City Council of Perry is ready for a meeting. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Here.
Dow.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here. I do declare a quorum. Consider agenda is lengthy. There's items A through L. Anyone like to see some of those separately for discussion?
I'd like to see F and G.
F and G. F and G, yes.
Make a motion to approve a consent agenda. Let's see, F and G. Second.
I had a motion to consider the consent agenda except for items F and G. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Item A.
I would just like to have these explained to me a little bit. I thought we weren't paying for that signal light, $30,000 it says. Are we paying for that?
Yes. We did contact the ODOT in regards to upgrading that intersection with a state-of-the-art signal, and the traffic counts did not meet the warrants, so they declined to participate. And so we basically went back with a little better than what was there before when the truck took out the one pole in the signal. So anyways, the materials were $30,000, and then item G is the recovery from the insurance company, $18,000 is how much we recovered from the insurance company for the, to go towards that purchase.
And they are gonna pay it? I just think that that signal light is terrible out there, so.
And when are they gonna repaint the lines?
That's a good question. They've agreed to repaint them, but we haven't seen anything from them yet, so. So ODOT has agreed to repaint and remove the, on the north-south, not on the east-west, but on the north-south, so.
So I was gonna ask for item F to be removed too, because is this going to, is this gonna fix the wonkiness of the, of the lights?
No.
So.
That's a design feature.
That's. I was talking about repainting the lines, but I thought we were doing all of them, not just north-south.
Well, really, the east-west ones, you stop, I mean, you stop before you can no longer see the signals. They're pretty much at the right. I mean, we'll look at all of them, but to me, you know, when I stop east and west, I can see the signals when I stop at the stop bar.
Yeah, east and west is a bad source.
It's the north-south, but when you pull up too far.
And that line's gonna have to be half a block away. The design, the design of the lights are horrible. It's like, this should be 90 degrees, it's an intern. Well, it's cheaper, they put two poles instead of having to do four. So this doesn't address that issue at all?
The back's a stop bar. Where it's not so comfortable.
Well, the stop bars were painted before the signal went in. And the stop bars were painted, and it was a four-way stop. And that's the reason that they're a little, you know, not exactly.
So the answer to the problem isn't adjusting the lights to where they're viewed, the answer is move the line back, so you're further away. Yeah. That's.
And for the record.
That's, that's the cheapest.
We'll be stopped back in front of the tired Lou. Yeah, so you're half a block away before you.
Still, you'll be able to see the signal light, so.
Yeah.
Well, you don't have to pull right up to the stop bar, because, you know, stop a move.
Don't talk about those kind of people though, okay? Well, do that at 5th tier, and the light will change. Get on the sensor.
Move up.
Pull up. Okay.
Item G, any questions on G?
No, I just felt like they ought to pay us $30,000 to keep those things there.
We believe that's it.
I make a motion, we approve F and G.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Stroller.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Item four, comments from those assembled on items pertaining to the agenda of the city council this evening.
We didn't best the could, sorry.
Comments from the audience? Seeing none. Item five, proclamation, commendation, reports, and inquiries about getting them done. Item six, see man.
Mary.
Well, our auditors arrived today, and they plan to be here today and tomorrow, but apparently Meredith and her cohorts have done such a good job preparing the work papers that they were able to finish in one day. So they finished up today, will not be back tomorrow. They will be back probably in a month or so to do some follow-up. But essentially, onsite, the auditors have finished. And they did bring quite a few, what, five?
Yep.
There were five here, so it does, you know, go along a little faster when you have that many. So anyway, so they're here, and it looks like all is good, and we're answering lots of questions, pulling files, and did that for most of the day. And so Dixie looks a little frazzled, that's why. The, this week is Public Power Week, and it's Public Power Week, the American Public Power Association. So we're celebrating along with 2,000 other electric utilities and of interest locally. There will be an open house at City Hall from 8:30 to 11:30. We'll have refreshments, giveaways, information on all sorts of electric items. And so I think those of us who are, have been associated with the public power community understand the importance it holds to our community, makes it possible for, you know, it diversifies our revenue base, because normally if we don't have an electric utility, sales tax would be our primary source, and water sales, which are not significant. So having the electric utility is a big boost, big asset for Perry, and so we appreciate having that in our community. Mid-September, we had a kickoff meeting out at Perry Municipal Airport on the update to the master plan. It's that update, we're being assisted by Garber Engineering, and it is funded by an FAA grant. And so we'll expect to have something back from them probably in December and work through the process. Basically, the master plan is to lay the groundwork for the next several years in regards to the improvements that we hope to make out at the airport and any other changes in terms of the airport operations. So that'll be, that'll be something that'll be coming to the council a few months down the road. And of local interest, they are, as part of the upgrade, they are sending out surveys to the tenants at the airport and also to local businesses. Those surveys will be coming out fairly soon. I don't have an exact date, but anyway, you can look for those. The, this last week, we heard from some of our utility customers that their September bills that they've just received were unusually high. And so those customers contacted us. We reviewed their accounts, reviewed their prior month's bill, and we reread the meter, and it appears that in many cases that the bill from the previous month was lower than normal due to meter reading error. And so this month, the bills have essentially caught up. The bills were lower in August, end of August, and the bills are higher. So if you take the two months, average them out, they're essentially what you would expect their monthly bill to be. But that still doesn't take the sting out of it, because the bill was low one month and now it's high. And so if customers find themselves in that situation, please call us, we'll reread your meter, we'll work with you on payment arrangements, and just let us know. Please contact us, and the sooner the better, really, because the bills have just gone out. Contact us if you find yourself in that situation.
Are they still averaging bills? I mean, can you get your bills averaged?
And I think.
This month?
Is this month, it's the signup month, to go on average billing. There are some certain, there's some criteria that you have to meet in terms of going on average billing, but this is the month to go on average billing. Good point.
So as far as the, this has kind of happened before.
It has.
So is this just like a training issue? We just need to train some of our readers better, or?
No.
Okay.
It is a personnel issue. Like they've been fully trained, so.
Okay.
So. Anyway, moving on, moving on.
Awkward. Didn't mean to bring everything to the stop.
Well, that was, well.
Got my attention.
Actually, it was one of the first, the last time this happened, it was one of the first things I walked into when I first started, was this exact same situation. And so I had, I've broken my promise. I promised that this would never happen again, and it's happened. So I, you know, I apologize to the community, to the council. It shouldn't happen, and I can't say it will never happen again, but.
No read my lips.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's just human. I mean, I'm not saying that their air was human, but anytime we're dealing with, you're having people. It can be very difficult for a city manager to really promise it won't happen again because you are, unless you're gonna walk with them.
I mean, even if we had smart meters, sometimes those things glitch.
They do.
Solar flares. Yeah, that's right, yeah. Martians and such.
This Saturday, moving on, this Saturday is the city surplus auction. So if you see all those vehicles lined up, old vehicles, lined up down the street department.
Be the final bidder and pull one out.
Yes.
Successful.
Dixie has found the titles to every vehicle. So that's pretty exciting. Now, on the flip side, we have not found all the keys.
Keys are optional.
They're probably under the seat.
Well, that's a good, good idea.
And where's the auction gonna be?
It's gonna be at the street department. It's this Saturday. Starts at 10:00 AM. A local auctioneer, TJ Castile, will be the auction manager. And so to me, auctions are kind of like a social event. When you go, you see people you haven't seen for a long time, you know? You get to visit, you know, buy some unique items. So everybody needs to come on Saturday. There'll be plenty of unique items there being offered. And one final thing, the decorations around the square, and it did fall in Perry, it's really cool, all the decorations around the square. And I know a lot of residents decorate their homes for Halloween, too, so it's just a really fun time to drive around and see all those decorations.
And Main Street did that.
Yes, Main Street, yes. They provided the hay bales that are being used for the decorations. And so City Hall has theirs out in front. We're proud.
I think there's a contest.
Oh, is there?
Uh-huh. Oh. Do you know when that is, Karen? The contest? I think they're supposed to be done by tomorrow night.
There's several categories, I think. Scariest, traditional, lots of different categories.
So the Main Street did the decorations? And they judged it too?
I think they had some kids that do that. I'm not sure. I think the schools.
Well, the Main Street does their own decorations.
No, they furnish the veil, and they do the contest.
Like Mary bought artificial pumpkin. I said, they'll steal them.
I have asked the police to do extra patrol around the square, because the decorations are pretty, pretty nice. And one store, I think, does plan to take some of theirs inside, because it's invaluable. Anyway, that's the end of my report, my comments.
Thank you. Any questions for our city manager? Item seven, receive recommendation from Perry Planning Commission on application of RSM LLC to proposed buyer with the consent and approval of the city of Perry, Oklahoma. The proposed seller, applicant, for the site review of the property located east 32nd Street, south of the Comperley Inn, Perry, Oklahoma. Take action on the site review. This is gone before our planning commission. They are recommended to us. There's one, there's an error in the description there in the first paragraph of the background. That is a four-story micro-tail, not five. Okay?
Have we completed everything?
Have we completed?
If I remember right. The changes that we wanted to do on this?
Yes, it's, we didn't go back to.
Well, you're talking about.
No, 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 the contract amendments. No, we'll have some contract amendments come back to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
But this has nothing to do.
No, no. No, this is independent.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
I'm sure this was addressed during, either during the Board of Adjustments meeting or during the planning commission meeting, but was it, were there any concerns when they, when they made the variant, when they decided to permit the variance of the height? Was there any concerns about our fire being, our fire part being would reach the higher levels? Or did we feel like the inside sprinkler system wasn't enough for that?
I don't think there were any concerns expressed.
I mean, voiced.
That would be the same size as the other one that they.
No, it's one-story higher. The main thing that's over the height is the rug, the gabled rug. Certain number of feet above that is the height restriction we have. None of the floors.
But they will, they have their sprinkler system.
Yes. They have fire suppression built in.
That, yeah, that's what I was asking about, in terms of sprinkler systems.
Make a motion to approve.
We got a second?
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Item eight, approve resolution number 2014-11 of the City Council of Perry, Oklahoma agreeing to participate in ODOT's rail corridor program, setting out the proposed crossings to be approved and proposed crossing to be closed. Mary has been in discussions with ODOT on this and had meetings at our offices, all that her addresses.
One of the things that was kind of left up in the air when this was on the agenda the last time was whether or not, you know, if the railroad had anything planned for 15th. And so it took a little while to communicate and get the answer back, but the railroad is there rebuilding the bridge, the trestle, whatever you want to call it. And it's my understanding from what they've told me that they do plan to work on the surface of the crossing and make it smoother. And so that will be done after the bridge project.
They laid those concrete pads out last week there.
Oh, did they?
Yeah.
Okay. So anyway, I'm glad to know that because I, you know, I go in based on what the email told me and so-
I was in our yard during that truck pulled up, threw it on the ground and drove off.
So what I'm, it's my understanding that what they'll do there at 15th will be similar to the crossing that's just south of the transfer station. They did, they did that one a couple of months ago. And it's very nice, it's very smooth, so hopefully it'll be similar, you know, in nature. So basically Elm Street's being recommended to be closed and the crossings to be upgraded are 11th Street, there by the nursing home, Cedar Street, and the crossing out of 35th. That's, 35th is the road that goes south of the ball fields. And there is a crossing there, goes south and links up with Highway 77. And because of the future development out there, you know, it would seem that there's no crossarms, there's no lights, there isn't any protective equipment at that location. And with the future development in that area, this would seem to be the crossing to improve.
Is that considered in the city limits?
The city has property right there.
Is that considered in the city limits? Yes, okay.
Actually, I sent these three locations, actually all the locations, to Mark with ODOT and they came back with a looks-good response, so.
Now, just to be, so make sure I'm remembering this correctly. The Elm Street crossing, this resolution is just proposing that's going to be closed. There's still public hearings and all kinds of notifications that have to happen.
This just starts the process. This just basically starts the process, yeah.
Has there been any communication with the railroad and DOT together? We talked about trying to do Cedar Street and at the same time they had that bridge.
We'll work with them on that, so. Because we don't exactly know when the bridge project, I mean, ODOT, I've been talking with Jay Gilbreth about the Cedar Bridge. And so we'll try our darndest to hopefully coordinate that so that we don't get one finished and then have to close down and do the other projects.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
Motion to approve resolution 2014-11.
Second.
Second.
Stroller?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
No.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Item nine, consider approval resolution number 2014-13, the City Council recognizing Public Power Week as October 5th through the 11th of 2014.
So moved. Second.
Pro call please.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Item 10, item 10.
Nine, yes.
Consider award of bid for Texasent fuel. You see how it's outlined there? And they are recommending the bid as, recommend we accept the bid as printed here.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Pro call please.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Consider contract amendment number one to PDG Incorporated for Perry Baseball Complex. They're lowering their fee from 8% to 5.05%. That's him in.
Motion to approve, second.
Pro call please.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
No.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
No.
Johnson?
Yes. Item 12 is, it'll be a little more involved than just printed here, but consider award of base bid for the city of Perry sanitation sewer replacement project to craft rentals construction in the amount of $235,600 as the lowest possible, or lowest responsible bidder. Direct city administration and city engineer to determine additional sewer, sanitary sewer replacement work that may be accomplished pursuant to the unit pricing or otherwise within the project budget. Place public construction contract when necessary, with necessary bonds, insurance on an ex regular agenda, meeting agenda for consideration approval. What happened is, you see that the bid came in very well at $235,600 and we have a grant for $350,000.
Plus the cities. Blaine's here if you want him to report.
And so we're going to look at Blaine and Mary to extend our project to cover the total package, which is $504,144.50. And I know Blaine knows where to use it, don't you?
Yes, I do.
So what we're doing, we're executing the base bid and we'll come back, the contract come back amended with this additional work in it to use all the funds.
Well, we would do it as a change order.
Right.
We'll reward this contract and then, once we have them on board, we will look to see if we can extend the project using the, you know, bid prices. If we can do that, we can almost do twice as much as we thought we were going to be able to do, so we got great pricing.
Big change order number one?
Big one.
Well, it actually won't require a change order. I mean, it will require a change to the contract, but since we can do it under unit prices-
It would still be done as a change order because we're going to award this contract.
Okay, but-
I shouldn't be doing the award.
Yeah, we're awarding the bid.
We're just awarding the bid tonight and then we'll bring the contract back.
Right, but you can't change order above a certain amount unless-
You have unit prices.
Unless you have unit prices. We do have those.
Yes.
So you actually see, enter into the contract and do a change order under unit prices rather than just a straight contract?
That's what I would recommend because it's going to take, we still have to-
Design it?
Define, yeah, the next piece and then get a permit from DQ before we can do the work. That should only take us, permitting has been taken about 20 days, so we just need to put together a set of contract doc, or-
Then he'll raise the bond? Then he'll raise the bonds?
Yes, and that would be part of the change order, right?
Okay.
Any questions or comments? Other than Yahoo?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Pro call please.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Item 13, set date for celebration of Halloween. So I'll see and read in the background that the city has decided to set it on Friday, October 31st, 2014. Comments or action, counsel? What is your pleasure, counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Pro call please.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Item 14, consider approval of resolution 2014-14 of the City Council of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, notifying the public of the publication of the First Buying Supplement to the Perry Municipal Code 2012, consisting of all ordinances enacted to date by the City Council from and after the date of adopting the Perry Municipal Code in 2012, which was September 3rd, 2012. Hereafter, hereinafter referred to as the First Supplement, setting the price on written copies of the First Supplement directed to city clerks, to one, file a copy of the resolution in the office of the county clerk in Little County; to, file a copy of the First Supplement in the Noble Law, Little County Law Library; to, file at least one copy of this First Amendment in the office of the city clerk. This is a process we go through recodifying and it's just something that is noted here, we do every 10 years and then we have to do a supplement to the code every two years. And that falls on our city clerk and our city attorney to take care of that mess. So what is your recommendation, counsel?
I approve resolution 2014-14.
Second.
Motion, second. Pro call please.
It costs us $300 to do that, is that what they're saying?
No, no, if somebody wants to buy the code.
If they want a written copy of the code-
If they want a written copy, they pay $300.
Okay, and where is our Little County Law Library?
It's in the courthouse.
Is it also, would this be on the internet?
Yes, it's online.
It's online, yes. There's also one at the library, on the counter at the library.
Pro call please.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Is there any new business to come through the council, Steve? New business, anyone?
Chief?
Just real quick, I wanted to thank the council, Mary, the police department, we got our new radios installed last week. And the reason I wanted to bring it up, we probably have, what, 53, 5,500 people in this town and I bet 800 to 1,000 have a scanner. And if you've heard our transmissions lately, well, if I key up, I've got the volume down, hold on. You're going to hear that across your scanner and everybody's like, what is that sound? What that is, is a caller ID. So anytime we key up now on our cars or handhelds, it's displaying the officer who is on the radio, which is going to eliminate any mics being open. So I just wanted to kind of let the public know and you guys, if you hear a scanner, I know it's driving the county crazy and the dispatchers because of that sound, but what it is, is actually a caller ID to identify which officer. We also have, which is going to be installed next week, if somebody was to steal our police cars, we can get on here and shut our police cars down with these radios now. So I just wanted to thank you guys for the capital outlay and our radios that were 22 years old are up to the 21st century now in our radios, so thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, chief, we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Item 16, ladies and gentlemen, consider convening in the executive session to discuss confidential communication between the governing body and the city attorney concerning the city of Perry, Oklahoma versus Embry and Hodges Construction LLC and Landplan Consultants LLC, if the governing body, with the advice of the city attorney, determined that disclosure would seriously impair the ability of the governing body to process the claim in the public interest and to confer on matters pertaining to economic development of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, as public disclosure would interfere with the development and implementation of an agreement. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Make a motion, we convene in the executive session.
Pro call please.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
He let her rip. Reconvene.
We have a motion to reconvene?
Second.
And a second.
About three.
And a third.
Agreed.
Pro call please.
Stroller?
Yes.
Dow?
Yes.
Moxley?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Norman?
Yes.
Nation?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. We are in regular session.
No action.
There is no action, need, deemed necessary, counsel, is that true?
Yes.
Okay.[1770.21]